Good evening, welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Session, September 12th, 2017.
Good evening, everyone, we'll call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, prior to tonight's meeting, we had a reception and swearing and ceremony for town manager, Phil Ashton, our new town manager, we've officially welcomed him this evening, and we thank all of you who were able to attend, and I would also like to thank staff for putting this together, it was a lot of work and we definitely appreciate that, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have several approvals of sets of minutes, I'll ask for separate motions to approve each set, is there a motion to approve the August 2nd work session minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries, is there a motion to approve the August 8th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries, and finally, is there a motion for the, to approve the September 5th work session minutes?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion, Ms. Olin.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I sent in some corrections that did not get added, I have resent them because I got confirmation that they had been updated, but they're not, on comments that I made in the work session.
Okay, have those corrections been, been updated with the Clerk's office, do you know, we can always hold off on this vote if we need to make an addition?
I do not know at this time, but we will look at them tomorrow morning.
But they haven't been corrected in tonight's, what's in here, but I did send the email last week, I got confirmation, but they're not corrected.
Okay, why don't we hold off on this vote and we will do those, the approval at the next public hearing so we can sort that out, so we will abandon that vote, thank you. Okay, thank you for clarifying, Ms. Olin, we have several presentations this evening, the first one is a proclamation to recognize Virginia Bicycleist and Pedestrian Awareness Month, September 2017, and I'll recognize the Vice Mayor to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Virginia Bicycleist and Pedestrian Awareness Month, September 2017, in 2015, 15 bicyclists and 78 pedestrians were killed in crashes with motor vehicles in Virginia, to combat these tragic statistics, hundreds of partners, including towns, cities, counties, businesses, organizations, schools, and sporting groups from across the state, are teaming up with Drive Smart Virginia, Bike Virginia, the Virginia Highway Safety Office at the Division of Motor Vehicles, and other like-minded organizations to raise awareness about the importance of sharing the road in order to reduce the number of crashes and injuries. During the month of September, the public awareness campaign known as Virginia Bicycleist and Pedestrian Awareness Month encourages bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists to work together with this year's theme, See and Be Seen, to find solutions to reduce roadway injuries and fatalities while promoting safety, respect, and cooperation. Therefore, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim September 2017 as Virginia Bicycleist and Pedestrian Awareness Month in the Town of Herndon, recognize that bicyclists, motorists, and pedestrians all have mutual rights and responsibilities when traveling on the roadways of Virginia, emphasize the importance of safety for all individuals traveling on the roadways, and promote bicycling and walking as healthy, efficient, and sustainable forms of transportation. Be it further resolved that the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby express support for the Herndon Police Department, Herndon Police Citizen Support Team, and the Town's Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee in their efforts to make our roads, trails, and paths safer, and remind pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists to be safe, aware, and to share the road, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am, comments from the council on this one?
Sure, so I was selected to read this because I am the Chair of PIBAC, which is the Pedestrian Bicycleist Advisory Committee, and really, our key focus, which is a collaboration of both citizens, residents, that are, that are members, including some I see in the audience tonight, as well as staff and police, all come together in this committee, and our key focus is really, how do we get cyclists and walkers safely around town, and specifically safely to our future metro site is one of the key areas of focus, so it's really developing those, those safe routes and those partnerships. I also want to reckon, we have Green Lizard in the audience as well, so one of the owners of Green Lizard, who is, owns our bike shop in town, which is right on the W and O D trail and a really key, both community gathering spot and just member to, that also promotes key bicycle safety, they do a weekly ride, and as someone that's gone on that weekly ride, I know before that ride, and what they always talk to the bikers about in that shop is to be safe, to look out for, for, you know, motorists, and really share the road, and share the W and O D trail, which I know is very popular with cyclists. Also certainly want to acknowledge our Herndon cops, who of course patrol both on bicycles and in their cars and motorcycles, to promote safety, they've looked at places where the W and O D crosses major roads, and how do we make those more safe, you know, adding lights when that was necessary, and really, in addition to the Citizen Support Team that's mentioned, right, which is that group of volunteers that also patrols on bikes, and really helps to keep those modes of transportation as safe as possible, and as someone who just bought a house on the W and O D trail, and is a avid walker, and sort of avid biker, I'm getting there, but a very avid walker, I can tell you that really a walkable and bikeable community is, is really a popular community, right, that's the kind of place that people want to live, as we see, you know, new developments and things happening in town, folks want that walkability and, and just accessibility where they can get to places without having to get in their cars, so I just think this is critical, and certainly with the partnership of, and making sure it's safe is, is also key, so I'm very happy to be, to just acknowledge that, and all the community groups and our, particularly our police that help keep us safe, thank you.
Thank you, other comments, Ms. Olin?
I'm so excited to support this once again, and I see that the person on the PIBAC Committee that has been instrumental in working with Department of Public Works, Ms. Jo Adams, in helping with our audible lights around town, those are very important, you see them in larger cities, and with us getting to be so walkable, it's great that we're going to those extent to make people safe, and I'm also happy to see people that are walking their dogs are now putting those little blinky lights on that I like to use when I walk, even when I walk around to my neighbor so that people can see you, people are now putting them on their dog so that you can see, because the dog's in front of you, and I've seen them several times when I'm coming home on Spring Street, and you see this, you know, dog in the outline as the light keeps blinking on and off, it's kind of cute, so be safe walking and riding your bikes.
Thank you, other comments, Ms. Friedrichs?
I am also very delighted to support this, I live off Ferndale Avenue, and where Ferndale Avenue and Washington and the W and O D trail meet, there are frequently ambulances called to that area, and so I am keenly aware of the danger of not paying attention of, of just running lights, running stop signs, be as safe as you can, and I'm so grateful to Green Lizard for their focus on safety and knowledge of your bicycle, thanks.
Thank you, any other comments? Well, I concur with my colleagues, and one of the things that has been really important to this council and previous councils is making sure that Herndon is a safe place to walk and bike, and it's been mentioned, the metro is coming, the downtown redevelopment is just about to be underway, and connecting those and making you, making it possible to get from one to the other without getting in your car is really key. HPD, I'm sure will tell us more about this, but I know they are doing a safety campaign for cyclists, starting right now, I've seen some of the signs around town, so we're excited to promote this, and I would like to indict down for the presentation of the entire council, town manager, town attorney, members of the PIBAC Committee that are here, Chief de Board, Sergeant Galpin is here, and any other members of HPD or the Herndon Politic, Police Citizen Supports Team that would like to join us for the presentation, and Green Lizard,
Pleading Madam Mayor, Town Council, thank you for having us here tonight for this, as you know, the Town of Herndon and surrounding areas have thousands of bicyclists and pedestrians who enjoy, as you said, walking, running, biking, and recreation, exercising, community work, and it's important for all of us to promote the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Campaign, to keep our trails and roadways safe and to reduce the number of unnecessary accidents, and the goal of the Herndon Police this year and Department is, and other local agencies across Virginia, is to change motors, pedestrian, and bicycle behavior, to reduce the number of fatalities and crashes with injury, and some of the ways we can do, reduce these accidents are by educating our drivers, pedestrians and bicyclists about the safe usage of our roadways, and also increasing enforcement efforts, pedestrian bicycle traffic safety laws, and making our drivers and pedestrians and cyclists aware of these enforcement actions, by increasing these efforts, and with everyone's help, we hope to promote the importance of bicycle and pedestrian safety by making our streets, trails, and safer for everyone, so thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you for being here.
Yep.
Next up is a proclamation to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2017, and I'll recognize Councilmember Friedrichs to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2017, since 1968, Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated from September 15th through October 15th, there are many definitions of Hispanic, and experts have yet to come to an exact agreement, generally Hispanic is a Spanish-speaking person, or person of Latin American or Spanish ancestry, or in some definitions, to ancient Roman Hispania, which roughly comprised the Iberian Peninsula, including the contemporary states of Andorra, Portugal, and Spain, and the Crown Colony or British Overseas Territories of Gibraltar. Today, organizations in the United States use the term broadly to refer to persons with historical and cultural relationship either to Spain or with Spain and Portugal, regardless of race. Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, gained their independence from Spain on September 15th, 1821, and Chile gained independence on September 18th, 1821. Mexico's Independence Day is different from that of the other nations, on September 16th, 1810, the Grito de Dolores, the Cry of Dolores, was declared by Father Miguel Hidalgo, beginning the Mexican War of Independence. September 16th, 2017 marks 270 years, 207 years of Mexican independence from Spanish rule, therefore, the town, and the mayor and the town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2017, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the Town of Herndon, and recognize that Americans of Hispanic and Latin heritage have a positive influence on our community through many fields, including business, law, politics, education, community service, the arts, sciences, and as members of our armed forces. Further, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all residents to learn more about the history of Americans of Hispanic and Latin heritage, to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities celebrating these diverse cultures, and highlight that this is also an opportune time to celebrate the heritage of people from other Spanish-speaking countries throughout the Americas, Europe, and Africa, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am, comments from the council, Ms. Friedrichs?
I was really delighted to have the opportunity to read this proclamation recognizing the history and contribution of our fellow citizens and residents of Hispanic heritage. The population of Herndon as of 2010 was over 33% Hispanic, so our friends and our neighbors and our colleagues are all contributing to our community, and I am delighted that our Town of Herndon is a welcoming and open place for all to be recognized and to enjoy living, working, and playing here, thank you.
Thank you, other comments from council, Ms. Olin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I too am very happy that we're recognizing this again, I was fortunate enough my senior year in college to do my student teaching in Mexico City, Mexico, and I was there for their Fourth of July, and it was some party indeed, but I became, you know, I really had a fondness for the people of Mexico, I thoroughly enjoyed going there, and that was part of the reason when we were looking at Herndon, and I went into several of the stores and they had things in English and Spanish, and it reminded me of my time in Mexico City when I knew some Spanish but couldn't read everything, and everything was English and Spanish, and it made me feel very welcome, so I'm glad that we do that here in Herndon as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, this is something I, anytime you have diversity and cherish it and celebrate it, it's a wonderful thing, and, you know, I think about all the sacrifices that the community has made, especially, you know, in the military, you see a lot of, you know, Hispanic soldiers, and in fact, on Friday, I was at the Nats game for Roberto Clemente night, and Roberto Clemente was not only a fantastic baseball player, but an amazing humanitarian who lost his life flying to Nicaragua to help those who were devastated by an earthquake at that time, so to see the amount of people that were there for that game and, for the Roberto Clemente evening, and to have this proclamation to show the pride, I think is a wonderful thing, and I'm glad to be part of it.
Thank you, other comments, Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's that time of year in the HOA calendar where we get ready for the annual meeting, and that means sending out a notice to all the different owners in my HOA, this year, we were able to find Spanish-speaking residents who helped us translate the English version of the notice into Spanish, and I know the town does that when, when it's reasonable to do that, so I'm happy to be able to look at the diversity of our town, I know in my, my small little HOA, I have at least six different cultures represented, it's very diverse, now the next thing that I'll have to do is translate it into Russian, which is going to be even a little bit more difficult, but we're happy to celebrate diversity in Herndon, and this is just one of the ways that we do it.
Thank you, sir, any other comments? I agree, one of the wonderful things about raising my family here in Herndon is the diverse cultures that they're exposed to, and we're happy to work every day to make Herndon a hometown for everyone, and this proclamation of welcoming and celebrating our Latino and Hispanic neighbors is a joy to be a part of, so I appreciate the council's support of this. For the presentation, I will invite forward the entire council, town manager, town attorney, and I think we have representatives here from the Dulles Regional Chamber of Commerce, and Nuri Mena, the co-chair of Hispanic Business Council Committee, oh, I see you back there, all right, and, I lost my place, Val Kaiser is an officer on the Board of Directors for the chamber, any other members of the audience that would like to come forward, I'm representing I know, right, that's right.
Good evening, everyone, it's always great to recognize significance, and I, as a child of a naval officer, I moved around our country and also had the opportunity to live in Italy and Germany, and I remember as a child living in San Diego, and that was my first exposure to watching television in Spanish, and, you know, seeing some different things, and as I grew up, I just came to accept that there's many different wonderful cultures and many different neighbors, because literally, I moved almost every single year, there were only a couple of times when I was in the same school for two years, and so I love living here in our greater metropolitan area, since I came in 71, I've seen such a, you know, a surge and many different types of peoples coming here to live and work and play together, and I'm very happy to be part of the Herndon community, my office is across the street, and my children went to Loudoun County Elementary School where 55 different languages were represented there, and so I look upon this as just wonderful opportunity to expand and open our minds, and when we look back over our shoulders, you know, there've been some challenges in our history, whether local, nationally, as we try to, you know, adopt and adapt to one another, but when I look back over my shoulder, over my lifetime, and it's been a while, y'all, I just see so many positive changes, just even since my older kids and my younger kids, you know, from a 40-year-old to a 19-year-old, you know, we, we just have so much opportunity in our country to keep growing, because, I mean, it's our diversity, it's all of the immigration that has really kept us strong, our economy's strong, our ideals strong, because we always have to really reassess and recognize that as we, as we think about, it makes us think about what we're doing and how we can change, maybe resistant a little bit at first, but it's all for the good, and I'm very happy to be here tonight, representing the Dulles Chamber, and we look forward to the Hispanic Committee Party, they always have the best party every year, if y'all, have y'all ever come for that, okay, that is the best party, the best event that we have each year at the Chamber, and thank you again, and I appreciate this, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Our, I think this is our last proclamation of the evening, is to recognize POW MIA Recognition Day, which is September 15th, 2017, and I'll recognize Councilmember McKenna to read the proclamation, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate that, a Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing POW MIA Recognition Day, September 15th, 2017, for many years, the American Legion supported the observance of National POW MIA Recognition Day, which with the Legion's support, was first recognized at a national level, July 18th, 1979, that first year, Congress passed a resolution, and the national ceremony was held at the National Cathedral in Washington, DC. Every year following, POW MIA Recognition Day legislation was introduced until 1985, when the President began to issue a proclamation honoring this important day each year on the 3rd Friday in September. POW MIA Recognition Day honors the commitment and sacrifices made by our nation's prisoners of war, and those who are still missing in action and their families. On this commemorative day, we pay tribute to the servicemen, women who have not returned home from past conflicts, stand beside families and their loved ones, and honor those who have been held captive as prisoners of war. We remain focused on America's responsibility to achieve the fullest possible accounting of the missing members of our armed forces and to bring them home. Therefore, in recognition of these brave Americans, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim Friday, September 15th, 2017, as POW, POW MIA Recognition Day in the Town of Herndon, offer full support to all members of the United States Armed Forces who defend American lives and liberties with unwavering devotion. Further, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim that the Town of Herndon shall annually observe the 3rd Friday of each September as POW MIA Recognition Day, and encourage citizens to acknowledge this day of honor and remembrance through the display of POW MIA flags and with appropriate ceremonies and activities, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir, comments on the proclamation?
Yeah, I, this is an important day to me, because I had several uncles serve in World War II, and two didn't come back, and there was one gentleman who was the commander of the VFW in my hometown, 5479, his name was Dick Graham, and my parents had a store, and he always came in, he was, you know, took a liking to me, he was just an amazing man, and he fought in Korea, and he took me to, I saw the Vietnam War Memorial when it first was there, when I was like seven years old, and, you know, he was just an amazing person, and I'd realized he was, he was prisoner of war in the Korean War for some time, and he was, he was in the store one day, and a car backfired outside, and he hit the ground, and that was the first time I realized in my life, you know, I heard stories about my uncle, but I saw what war can do to somebody, and it's, a person like that shouldn't have to go through something like that, and I know there's members in the military here tonight, and there's not enough we can do to thank you, and the people especially that are, you know, we don't have any recount for them, we have to stay vigilant on that, we have a thing, there's a thing rolling thunder, and a lot of people, you know, the bikes going into town, very ceremonial, but people, some don't, don't realize, the purpose of that is, the sound of the bikes is to remind Washington that there's still people out there that have not been accounted for, and we have to be vigilant about that, so I really appreciate the council getting behind this, and from the bottom of my heart, it means a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, other comments from council, Ms. Cunningham?
Just want to echo Councilmember McKenna's remarks, over 1,600 Americans still remain unaccounted for from our last three wars, that's 1,600 families that will not find closure at Arlington National Cemetery, that's 1,600 children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren who don't have those stories that Bill was able to share with us, so take a moment to think about those 1,600 families and their descendants, and do take a moment sometime this fall to go by Arlington National Cemetery, I'll call your attention to an event that the Herndon Women's Club will be rolling out shortly, and that's wreaths across America, for $15, you can buy a wreath to honor a veteran both in our hometown cemetery as well as at Arlington, and so for those families who, who have loved ones buried there, they have closure, but take a moment to think about those 1,606 missing American service members, thank you.
Thank you, other comments, Ms. Olin?
I always remember in 1996, that there was a farmer in England that was out in his field, and he saw something shiny, and that something shiny was the dog tag of a World War II pilot that had gone down, that had never been found, MIA for all those years, and when they had the funeral and interviewed the man's daughter, who was two at the time he disappeared, she talked about how she always knew her father would come walking in that door, and it's a pain that never goes away, because that was two years after my husband disappeared, not in the service, but he's never been found, and all I could think is, oh my God, are my kids going to have to grow up like this, so if you know someone who lost someone as an MIA, or they were a POW, it is something that never goes away, and we do owe a debt of service, gratitude to those service members that served for us, thank you.
Thank you, other comments? Well, this is one of the few proclamations that without fail, we recognize every year at this time, and I concur with my colleagues, we do have We do have Commander Dave Womack from the American Legion, Kidwell Post one eighty-four. We're thankful that you're here this evening to, to accept the proclamation. We'd like to invite you forward, along with the mayor and council, town manager, town attorney, anyone else who's in the audience who served in the armed forces or as a member of the American Legion. We welcome you forward, and then we'd love to hear from you after the presentation.
I just want to take a minute and thank the council for what you're doing here today. I'm Steve Munt, retired from the Army after thirty-two years as a general officer. But I think whether it's the Army, the Air Force, Marines, the Navy, the Coast Guard, Merchant Marine, all of those folks serve, and they all live by one, one kind of code, when we deploy and when we go into harm's way. And we don't do it for glory, we don't do it for recognition or anything else. We do it because of the people that we love, and because of values and freedoms that we were talking about tonight and many of the other proclamations. But the one value that we never forget is we will never forget, and we will never leave somebody behind. And those sixteen hundred people that, that Councilmember Cunningham was talking about are people that we can't account for. But we will never break faith with them, and we will continue to search for them. And that's why today, we still actively seek the remains or the, the, the people, if we'd rather find the people, but in many cases, we're finding remains, even from the Second World War, from Korea. We have very active efforts in the Pacific and a lot going on now in Southeast Asia as well. So, thank you very much for what you've done. I appreciate it, and I know those that serve with me do.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commander.
Thank you so much. I have no formal prepared remarks, but I do want to say a few words. First of all, it's hard to pass up a general officer who does such a good job, so I, thank you, sir, very much. Thirty-two years, I only got twenty-two in, so obviously, I got a long ways to go on stuff like that. Thank you for remembering POW MIA Day. This is something that a lot of towns don't seem to do, but ours does. We are a town of veterans. You can go around the corner at the Home Depot and find all the bumper stickers and the tags on the back of cars, these guys and gals that are here that have served, that are part of our community, the fabric of our community. And we at the American Legion, thank you for that. POW MIA's are something that we remember at every meeting. We set out a place for that missing man or woman. It is important to us. We do the business of the day, but in the back of our minds, we know that what echoes from the past is that missing man or woman in our formation. Your support is key, and you all have shown it over time, and we do thank you so much about that. These missing people, these missing veterans, these missing warriors, the POWs, they're amongst us, the POWs are. You spoke about the gentleman from the VFW that you grew up with. I, I can talk about a man who was six feet, six tall, Mr. Coles Goodner, who owned Goodner's Variety Store in my first job. Come to find out, he was a navigator for a B twenty, I'm gonna get the aircraft wrong because I'm an Army guy, but in World War II, B seventeen, there you go, somebody shouted it out, who for eighteen months was in a, a German POW camp. Very calm, and I knew him for decades, and I never knew it till right at the end. But taking a moment today really means a lot to the post, to the town, and to all of us, so I say thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Mister Town Manager, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I certainly do, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the council for the kind reception upstairs earlier this evening. On behalf of my family, they thank you as well. I want to say a special thanks to Vicki Weller's House, who is an event coordinator extraordinaire. She did a phenomenal job. And Margie Tachi, who spearheaded the setup, even though I came in the eleventh hour and tried to rearrange things, she kind of shooed me out, back to my office.
That's what she does.
Yes, she does, very well. And the staff at DPW, those folks, the hard-working folks at DPW, that come in, do the setup, the tear-down, the cleanup, they, every day, I'm amazed by the phenomenal job they do. And so, I thank everybody on behalf of my family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mister Davidson, do you have any comments for us?
No comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mister McKenna?
Just a couple.
Just a few. The Herndon Youth Advisory Council, we made our final selections, so if you're watching on television, look for the email shortly. So, I want to thank everyone for applying to that. I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna be middle school and high school kids that will be giving us their input in regards to what's going on in town, so I, I can't wait for that because they'll definitely give me what needs to be said, so.
Think we're gonna learn a lot.
There'll be no filter, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. The other things I want to say is, Margie, I know you're spending your thirtieth anniversary with us today, so I want to thank you for...
There's no place she'd rather be than just right here.
And she has a wedding coming up, too, so the fact she's able to keep all this under control just speaks volumes to the kind of person you are. So, thank you very much. And finally, Fallon, good to have you back, my friend. I know you've had some things, and just know that we were hoping and praying for you, so it's good to see you back in the, I call that in the opera chair. So, really appreciate you coming back, and good to see you up in Adam. So, good to see you.
Good cur. Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I want to offer congratulations to everyone who was on the Homes Tour this past Sunday, the garden tour. And I know Councilmember Friedrich's garden was on there, and I know what a tremendous amount of work. So, if you haven't had a chance to participate, the town holds a Homes Tour in December and a garden tour in the spring or fall. It's a wonderful event, so I want to thank everybody who volunteered to be on that. Also, I want to call your attention to Third Thursday, next Thursday, the twenty-first, will be Third Thursday of the month, the arts groups in Herndon put on a really great outdoor event, so please come on by. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
Well, Ms. Cunningham said all the things I was gonna say, so I concur with Ms. Cunningham, and I have nothing further.
Thank you. Ms. Olem?
Thank you. And the garden tour was great, and your yard was even just awesome, but they all were. September twenty-third, if you enjoy the airplane pool, it's coming up at the Dulles Airport. If you don't know how to find out about it, just, you can ping me or email the clerk, and she'll get you to me, and I can get you the details. Also, on Saturday night before she had the garden tour, Ms. Friedrichs and Councilmember, and I and a couple of my friends went to see the play Disgraced by Next Stop Theater. It's an excellent play. See, one of my buddies out there that went with us. And it's a great, great, great night out, but it's very thought-provoking. You might want to try it. And it's very, with this being Hispanic Heritage Month, it fits right in because it's talking about diversity, so you might want to check that out and try it.
Okay, thank you. Ms., Madam Vice Mayor?
Sure. So, there is so much going on in the month of September, so between now and our next public hearing, just a few things additional to mention in addition to what the council has already talked about. So, this Saturday, there is the native plant sale at Runnymede, and also on Sunday, the twenty-fourth, go back to Runnymede for Nature Fest. So, we're really lucky to have a thirty-eight acre park.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, sorry, I said thirty, fifty-eight acre park in our town. It's sort of our central park, right? So, please take advantage of that and those two events they have coming up. September twenty-third, Herndon High School is hosting their showcase of bands, so it's where marching bands from all around the, the area, I was gonna say Fairfax County, but it's bigger than that, I believe, come to Herndon High School. We, we host it every year, so that's all day. If you like to see marching bands, it's fun, so go check that out. It's basically like eleven to ten o'clock at night, all day on the twenty-third. As Ms. Olem mentioned about Disgraced and what the, the great plays and things that Next Stop Theater has going on, they also have their, they're gonna be selling a lot of their costumes on September thirtieth, that morning, from seven to eleven. I hate to even tell anyone because I totally want to be first in line, but I should tell people about it because it is gonna be cool. I need costumes for some things, so that's, that's gonna be held at Arts Space. Also, want to say thank you to the Rotary Club for hosting the Classic Car Show this past weekend, so that was on Sunday. I thought that was great. And Mayor, the weather was beautiful, so I took credit. You always blame me when the weather's terrible.
I do.
But I, I took credit because it was gorgeous day. Let's see. And then, I also want to talk about, so on, this Friday is the Third Jambrew. If you haven't yet been to Jambrew, so for all of you, because you know I talk about Friday Night Live, which is a blast, but the Herndon Hospitality Committee has organized this event, Jambrew, for the past seven years, and it is really, it's dried. I mean, it's a fun, cool event. It's got a great vibe, it's got great vendors. They're very particular about having local vendors, including Aslan is their exclusive beer provider. Great bands. I just highly recommend that you check out Jambrew. It's every Friday night through September, and it ends on the last Saturday of the month, September thirtieth. It's an all-day Okto Brew Fest, all day on Saturday, so there's tons going on. And, let's see, I think, I think I had all the main things I wanted to hit. That was a plenty. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Lots going on. I wanted to let you guys know that the Parks and Recreation Department is really focusing on organizing a lot of fun family events, and for, we, there's supposed to be a cupcake ride, and it was canceled due to weather. They're working on rescheduling that. Who doesn't love a cupcake ride? But if you, there's several other events, so if you visit the town's website for the list of events, it's under Family, there's Family Fun and Fitness Fest on September twenty-third, so there's something for everybody. Also, I see a bunch of our downtown business owners in, in town here, or in the chambers tonight. Aslan is having their second anniversary party this coming, it's this weekend, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the sixteenth. Formerly O'Sullivan Sully's Poorhouse closed up for a week, did a bunch of remodeling. I've heard it looks great, so they're up and running again. The brick sidewalks are out in downtown, the Beer Garden at Jimmy's looks great, The Breeze, if you want to watch the Redskins or any other team, I guess. Phil would be happy to host you over there, so if you're looking for something to do, after all of these great events, head to one of our downtown restaurants for sure. That brings us to the comments from the audience portion of the agenda. This is the portion reserved for people to speak on any item that's not listed under the public hearing titles on the agenda. This does include the consent agenda or general items or anything else that's on your mind that you'd like to bring to the council. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Mister Murphy. Fancy meeting you here.
Madam Mayor, Members of Town Council, Shane Murphy with Law Firm Reed Smith, seventy-nine-hundred Tyson's One Place in Tyson's, Virginia. Here tonight to talk about the zoning ordinance text amendment seventeen dash zero-two, which is, deals with, we think primarily, the, the Planning District, the PDTOC District in the metro area. We're a little bit concerned about this, which we didn't know about before this week, that there were gonna be some, what we think are pretty major changes to the PDTOC ordinance that was just approved, not even four years ago. I have a client within the PDTOC that is almost done with a site plan. The changes in this ordinance, if the site plan is not approved quickly, would actually impact that site plan. It would turn that site plan from by right into a development plan required plan. And so, we think that the changes here are pretty, pretty severe. There's two other speakers that will speak to a couple of other aspects of this that concern their clients. I think between the three of us, we represent about ninety percent of the landowners in the, in the Herndon Transit Oriented Corps. The concerns we have among my clients primarily are about use. When, when we started the PDTOC District, it, all of the restrictions were based on the, the type of density. There were a lot of by right uses, as there are typically in a lot of urban areas, and primarily, the restriction was if you could go up to a point seven FAR by right, as you could prior to the PDTOC. If you wanted to go from a point seven to a one point two, you went the special exception route. Anything above that required a development plan with proffers. I know that there's one other developer who also has a representative here tonight who is actually going for a full development plan. I think they have some different concerns, but primarily, I think our concern is the requirement that many of these uses will now have to go back through a development plan amendment or a development plan in order to be approved. As an example, if a landowner has a development plan approved, and that development plan does not show a retailer or restaurant use on it, and they want to switch from a retailer to a restaurant, they would have to go back through the Planning Commission and Town Council as we read this to be able to have that use approved. So, we think there's, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty that this is going to inject into the metro area at the very time when you've got a lot of landowners and a lot of folks who are either thinking about or are bringing forward applications. You know, authorizing this text amendment, in our opinion, at this point in time, without having discussions with all the stakeholders, not, you know, just, not just the landowners, but, you know, the town citizens and, and all of the folks who are involved over there, we think it'd have a pretty chilling effect on what we thought was a pretty staid amendment. So, with that, I see my red light is on. I will yield my time to the next speaker. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Evening. Madam Mayor, Members of the council, my name's Mike Kitchen with Christopher Consultants, and I'm here speaking as a representative of the folks from Penzance, Lerner Corporation, and also HF Water Dragon. As Mister Murphy had mentioned, you know, there's a number of concerns that are with, proposed within the zoning text change related to the PDOT, PDTOC, that, that could have considerable impact to these property owners, specifically, the folks from Penzance. They have a development application in the process, in the process right now, being looked at by town staff. And the proposed increase in the buffer between the toll road and any proposed structures on the site, it's, it's increasing from forty to eighty feet, is going to have a sizable effect on their ability to develop the property in the manner in which was intended while the PDTOC was being created. And then, more generally, there's the changes that are proposed to the uses, and just a lot of questions that are out there that all three property owners have concerns with. And the process that was used to create the PDTOC was a very involved process, including property owners, other stakeholders, working with staff, Planning Commission, the Town Council, and it was a very well-thought-out and a process that I think everybody thought went very well. And so, we would just encourage staff and council to consider going through that process again and bringing those folks back in just to, so that they can be considering exactly, you know, everything that's, that this could affect is, is taken into consideration before the change is made. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amanda Williams, an attorney with Cooley here tonight to similarly speak on item number sixteen on your consent agenda, a zoning ordinance text amendment proposing changes to the PDTOC zoning district. Our firm represents several property owners within the Herndon Transit Oriented Corps area whose property is currently governed by this zoning ordinance. You received a letter earlier this afternoon from Mark Looney of our office that lays out our specific concerns regarding the potential adverse impacts of the proposed changes to the PDTOC district regulations associated with this zoning ordinance text amendment. I won't reiterate all of those points here, and Shane covered our concerns related to the permitted uses and the changes associated with that. But I did want to come in person tonight to reiterate that we strongly urge the Town Council to defer action tonight on this initiating resolution to allow time for more dialogue with the affected property owners and stakeholders in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item? Yes, sir.
Steve Munt, eight fourteen Locust Street. I wanted to come in tonight and just, I know you're brand new, but here, here's what you gotta hear. Lenny and his crew this morning from Your Public Works had to come over and do some work near our property on the corner of Locust. And you know, we've, we've gone through the temporary fire station and the lot and everything else, and we can talk about that, but the, the real issue is, is Lenny came in yesterday, came by the house, said, hey, we're gonna do this tomorrow, this is what's gonna happen, here's when it's gonna happen, I'll come over and let you know. Did that. That's the kind of professional service that, that the Town of Herndon stands for, and we really appreciated that this morning because we knew when the water was coming off, and we knew when the water was coming back on. And that's a big thing when you're living in a house, so.
Thank you, sir. We, they do a great job. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing? Mister Downer?
Mayor Merkle, Members of Town Council. My name is Richard Downer. We live at eight fifteen Branch Drive, number three oh eight. First, I'd like to welcome Mister Ashton aboard. He has the fortune of heading one of the finest staffs in the state of Virginia, and I've been around here a long time and seen a lot, and I know you'll do... And I know you'll do a wonderful job with it. Congratulations. And I would like to congratulate Mrs. Baker on her new home.
Do you know anything about that home, Mr. Downer?
Too much about it, I'm afraid.
Well, the innuendo. Ms. Baker brought Mr. Downer's house. Don't want there to be any rumors flying. Sorry.
Actually, what I'm actually here about is the new AstroTurf Field at Brady Park. Unfortunately, we, I wrote down the date wrong in my calendar, and we walked up there the afternoon after it was dedicated. But that is a real asset to the town, and it really looks nice. And it looks like the contractor did an excellent job all the way around. Now, we need to support the Parks and Rec Department with the proper kind of trash cans. Now, I realize one of the reasons the cans were all full the other day was because they had just been the event the day before. But I've sent these to the former Town Manager and Public Works Director, but I'll send them again if we need to. Asheville, North Carolina, has cans, and I've taken pictures of them, and it's two cans together, a recycle can and a trash can. And it encourages people. I can tell you right now, I've talked with Public Works guys. You got it, right up here at the top of this building, there is a blue can. And the blue can's all by itself. And guess what? Everything, 50% of what's in there at least, is not recyclable. And the guys just throw it away. The gals just throw it away. So please, take a look and support, you know, financially, the Parks and Rec Department, because they run a wonderful operation up there. And we really need to do a better job of making it easy for people to dispose of things properly. Also, and I warned Cindy I was going to come up here beforehand, so. And also, one of the things, it's always bothered me, is we really need to find one of the old golf carts over at the golf course, and give it to public, give it to the staff at the community center to let them go around easily every morning and clean up around Brady Park and the outside of the building. There are times when you go up there, and it's for the activities during the week, particularly, or the weekend, and it's just not very neat. And that's what I would like to see, and give them a way to do it, and support them financially to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing, and that does include our one general item about the food trucks? Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak at this time? Mr. Nackman. Yes, sir. It's a general item, so this would be the time to speak on that. Yep. Yes, sir.
Morning. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Time, time, you know, I go 24 hours a day. My name is Arthur Nackman. I live at 866 Vine Street. I came down this evening to speak against the change in the ordinance reflecting food trucks. I think that in this particular area of the town, I think that this is not something that's warranted. I have seen, you know, places where it does exist in a very compatible situation in office parks and industrial parks. But we're just moments away from redeveloping our downtown. I don't think this is in keeping with what we want to do. I think if an establishment wants to offer food to their patrons, they do have an option. It's called a kitchen. And it would be inside, and it would be just like all the other restaurants that we have in the downtown. So I would ask that you vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
I'm glad I asked for that point of clarification, Madam Mayor. Yes, statement again from 814 Locust Street. I live right across the street from the area that we're talking about, okay? And I would just do a quick history. Two, three years ago, we went to put the temporary fire station in. And we had a big discussion like this, and one of the items I said, because the way we were going to return it was to as-is at that time. And I said, "Please don't do that. It's a big parking lot. It collects trash. It does everything." Well, sure enough, three years later, after we moved the fire station, what have we done? We tore out all the utilities we put in there. We put all the parking that we put in there. We tore all of that stuff out. And we created another big gravel lot and a grass area that now somebody's got to go mow, because we didn't take the opportunity to improve the property. Now what we're talking about is we have a business that wants to come into town, and it needs to operate like any other food service business in the town. We, that's the whole area where we're trying to develop, at least I think, as restaurants, and taverns, and pubs, and those kinds of things, so people have a place to go with their families and do that. This is not conducive, across the street from our house, to have food trucks that are parked out there with no restrictions, as it says in the discussion. It says, "Instead of 21 hours, it's unlimited, unrestricted. You could have more than one truck." You know, and not to mention, we just got done talking about the trash cans. So where's all that trash going? It's going right in that lot, going right into the neighborhoods that are family communities. That's not indicative of the town of Herndon. And I would strongly encourage you to vote no against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Or I guess any item that's not a public hearing item, including the general item? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew from Aslan, a company who's proposing this.
Sure, and you know, I want to clarify too. You can speak now if you like, but you also get an opportunity during the general portion as the applicant, doesn't he? Or does he? Am I wrong? Never mind, I'm wrong. Go ahead. That's why I ask questions.
I realize it's going to be tough to pass this today, but we're going to work hard to get it passed. To be clear, if it doesn't get passed, we do plan on having a food truck there every night of the week. So if it's us, a respectable town business that's going to make sure it's clean, or it's somewhere else, just take that into consideration. Second thing, we do plan on developing that property. We've spent a lot of money on the property. We're spending a lot of money to turn the cleaners into a respectable town area. And the last thing is food trucks. Food trucks drive economic development. They're very progressive. Asheville, someone brought to Asheville, making it a clean city. There's food trucks at nearly every brewery across that town. I was just in San Diego. San Diego has 180 breweries, nearly as many as Virginia. Every brewery has a food truck, nearly. If it's a brew pub, they have a kitchen. We plan on having a kitchen. This is a temporary fix as we decide to develop the property. I actually personally invested in the town. I just bought a property on Vine Street and Main. So I want it to be clean. We have a lot of money invested in the town, so don't think this is a quick fix. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. He's all in for the town. Moved to town, business in the town. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that is not a public hearing item, that does include general items, consent items, or anything else that you'd like to speak on? Yes, sir. Mr. Adams.
Dale Adams at 1106 Iron Ridge Court. This is my first attempt at hearing what's going on with the food trucks. And I just look at what goes on on the streets in DC with the food trucks. I'm dead set against them being allowed in Herndon. Herndon is a place that we want to be as pristine as possible, that we'll invite everybody in at any time, and give them the service that they deserve. Please vote against that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. That does bring us to, well, before we move to the public hearing items, I do want to clarify for anyone in the audience. We had several people talk about the consent agenda item, which is an initiating resolution about our metro station area. An initiating resolution, if that passes, simply sends that zoning ordinance text amendment idea to the Planning Commission, which would hold work sessions and multiple public hearings on that item, to make recommendations back to the Town Council. So it certainly, there is plenty of opportunity to address the concerns, I believe, that were brought forward today, and we are cognizant of that. So moving on to our public hearing item, we just have one. It's Resolution 17G69, to consider CPA number 1702 to establish a concept for a cycle track on the east side of Herndon Parkway, south of the WNOD Regional Park, and to incorporate by reference the design concept for a cycle track report and supporting documents prepared by AECOM. And we have Dana Hyberg with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My brief staff report. This is, again, is CPA 1702, as you mentioned. It is probably the most limited plan amendment that I've ever worked on, and it might be one of the smaller ones that you'll ever see, but it is significant for us. The purpose of this plan amendment is to establish a cycle track south of the WNOD. We want to further the purpose of providing connectivity toward the Herndon Transit Oriented Core. And we're also looking to fulfill a grant mandate that we have from the Virginia Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment. You're familiar with the Metro Rail Station Area Plan. It was adopted back in 2012. It did establish a cycle track through the Transit Oriented Core, but it did not cover areas north and east of the core. And the map that's here on the screen displays the area that I'm referencing. So that the area that would be affected by this plan amendment is south of the WNOD Trail, which you can see at the upper part of the screen. And it extends along Herndon Parkway and down past Spring Street. And down in the left corner of the screen, you can see where it ends. And to the, to the east of this location would be the Herndon Transit Oriented Core, where, again, we already have a cycle track designation. And then this particular property that you're seeing at the left lower corner of the screen is the Fairbrook property. And the Fairbrook property actually now has a feature with the application that's active at this time under the Landmark Alternate Zoning District. And that feature requires essentially a cycle track that matches the Herndon Transit Oriented Core. So in effect, we would see an extension of what you have in the Transit Oriented Core across the Fairbrook property, assuming they want to move forward, as they are showing every intent to do. And then, at that point, we would pick up the line that you see here, which is a more limited cycle track designation, not quite as involved or as extensive, I would say, as the cycle track through the Herndon Transit Oriented Core, which you may recall is a full, part of a full 30-foot streetscape, including all of the sidewalk and cycle track elements. This is consistent with the town's Master Trails Plan, which is part of the comprehensive plan. And the designation along the lower, I guess the lower right side of this map is the intranatal trail designation along Herndon Parkway. And so this cycle track is consistent with that part of the plan. We have some particular language, just a couple of additional points on this. And we have some language to insert into the plan in order to reference the report prepared on the cycle track. I'm not going to read all that particular language, but that gives the particular citation of the documents. And again, we want to do that at a couple of locations. So I've just cited those specifically. Again, it calls this cycle track as a general reference guide for enhancing pedestrian and bicycle connectivity between the Herndon Transit Oriented Core and the WNOD Regional Park. We would be adopting by reference the supporting studies that had been prepared. And those are cited here, and I'm not going to read through all the particulars on this slide. The conceptual dimensions per the report, I think, are of interest. The, they have a variable dimension on a tree, sort of a, we typically think of it as a utility strip or a tree planting area. Generally serves as both. It's typically covered in grass and provides areas to plant trees as well. That dimension they do display in the report is variable. The cycle track is eight to 12 foot in width. We have a foot of separation. We have the sidewalk at six foot in width, and that certainly meets minimum ADA requirements. And that gives us a toe in the 20 to 30-foot range. So your practical minimum total, if you will, if you have a five-foot-wide tree planting strip along with those other features, your typical width would be 20 feet. And as a note on existing conditions, the typical width that we have on most of the properties along through that area, if you look at the existing utility strip, the existing sidewalk, and the existing landscaped area, before you get to the parking lot, if you will, moving in, outboard from the edge of the street, inboard to the property, is about 30 feet. And that kind of goes with the requirements that live with the zoning districts that apply to those properties. Now, that's not 100% on every single property, so there will have to be some flexibility and some engineering work when we get into the details of that. And in reference to those details, implementation of this cycle track, we have planned to work with VDOT on the East Spring Street Widening Project to accomplish most of this, hopefully all of this. But we'll have to see if we can get the full length of this built into that project. It would be a relatively minor, it would be a significant piece of that project, but in the scope of that very large project, this is a fairly small item. So the details and dimensions are going to be subject to that engineering design of that project. But at least, the plan amendment provides a conceptual framework. And when all segments of the cycle track are complete, there will be a connection from the Metro Promenade along Herndon Parkway to the WNOD Trail. So you have that complete pedestrian connection, which, of course, is such an important goal. I think that concludes. I have one additional point. I did want to just mention a technical point, procedural point, that per Virginia Code, the governing bodies should act within 90 days of the Planning Commission's recommending resolution. And so the Planning Commission recommended this on August 7th. And so you certainly have time to consider this. And that concludes the presentation. Maybe I'll bring it back to the map, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for staff about the cycle track? Guess we're pretty excited about the cycle track. Okay, so there are no questions of staff? We will, this is a public hearing. I should have already opened the public hearing. So we will call for comments from the audience. You have up to three minutes to make comments on the cycle track. State your name and address for the record. Mr. Downer.
Madam Mayor, members of Town Council. We live at 815 Branch Drive, number 308. Just a couple of questions. First off, when it says "cycle track," it sounds like it's a high-speed raceway. I assume it is not. It's strictly a bicycle. It's strictly a bicycle access.
Correct.
We did visit Amsterdam in Holland, and they have literally beautiful bike trails going both ways, right adjacent to the right-of-way, with stoplights and every, I mean, in the busy area, but it's very interesting what you can do with that if you've got the right-of-way to do it. And Mr. Hyberg answered the question about what happens when you get to the bottom left of those dots, and that is to hopefully continue it on. But I would like to point out that between dots five and six, well, first off, I need to say, I'm on the board of Next Stop Theater Company, but I'm not here representing them, and I'm also part of the ownership of two sixty-nine, which is Sunset Park Drive, which is the industrial strength theater also known as. But one of my concerns is that is the secondary exit to that whole business park, and hopefully it needs a name, by the way. I wish you would please name that street, that intersection there, something, but it, I hope they have dealt with that in their planning, because that is not an insignificant amount of traffic that comes through there that feeds that park and will get even bigger when the, if and when the hotel is built down on the remaining part of that big grass area down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, anyone else would like to come forward and speak on this item, the cycle track? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Move to council level for discussion and action. Madam, Ms. Olem.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution seventeen dash G dash sixty-nine.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor made by a council member. Olem, seconded by a council member, McKenna.
Correct.
Discussion on the motion, Ms. Olem?
Yes, thanks, staff, for an excellent presentation. This has been a long time in the works, and the individual that was concerned about the egress, there will be numerous egresses along that cycle track, and those things are being looked into. If you're not familiar what a cycle track is, my son was discussing this, me, with me about this just the other day. If you notice on Drainsville Road, there is a bike lane, which is on the regular road. The cycle track takes it off of the road, but it will be separate from where the pedestrians walk. So, you'll have a place, and the place that I first got to run across this was in Stockholm, Sweden, and it was awesome, because they had these cycle tracks everywhere. So, you could be walking, but then, you know, to one side, you had the bicycles, and they were very good at ringing the little bells, so you knew they were coming up, and, you know, it worked great, and the people were safer, because the Herndon Parkway, the traffic does move pretty fast. So, it is a safer place for people to be than a four-lane road like the Herndon Parkway for bicyclers, and that's where the metro is going to be. But I totally support this, and it's been a long time coming, and it's just a continuation of what will be going on where the metro is, and that'll take it all the way down to the W N O D. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I want to thank staff. Last week, we did some hashing out in regards to some of the questions we had in regards to this particular cycle track, and I think it's a great idea for several reasons. First of all, of course, with metro coming, a lot of people will be taking bikes and also walking, and I think that'll be a nice, safe path for people to take to the W N O Trail, and they can go left into the downtown district without worrying about getting hit by cars, and I think that's a great thing. The other thing, too, is I just think getting prepared for what's happening in town, you know, giving options for people to have a safe place to go because of metro, it will help alleviate traffic, because if we get this ahead of schedule versus having it happen all at the same time, a lot more people will have this as an option to get to the metro from the, I believe that is the east side of town working its way south. So, great job by staff, and, again, thank you for answering all our questions last week. It was definitely informative, and I'm very excited about this.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs?
I echo, I echo the comments of council member Olem and McKenna. I've been reading a lot of information about how to make public areas desirable in towns. As you're aware, our society, people don't walk a lot outdoors, and one of the arguments is that it's not pleasant. The same thing with the bicycles. If it's hard, if it's frightening, people won't do it. Well, people my age won't do it. So, I think having a beautiful, safe, comfortable place to bike and to walk is, is key to making this a desirable place for our citizens and residents to be outside, to keep in shape, and to alleviate some of our traffic issues, so.
Also, thank you, staff. Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Davidson?
This is one more step in our efforts to make Herndon a really multimobile town and be able to use bicycles not only for recreation and to have pleasure rides on the weekends, but actually use it for transportation purposes, to get to the metro so that you could then travel to your ultimate destination on the metro. So, this is a part of a transportation network that we're trying to create here in Herndon, and it's multimobile in nature and is used more both for recreation and for, as we improve, make these improvements, transportation purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson did a good job of summing up exactly what we're trying to do here, so thank you, sir. If there are no other comments from council, I will call the question on the motion, which was made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. McKenna. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. That brings us to our one and only general item, which is an initiating resolution, seventeen G seventy, Zoda number seventeen zero three, to amend provisions within section seventy-eight eighty dash four T Mobile Food Unit Prepare Full Service. So, the official title there. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and call on Lisa Gilloran for this, for the staff report. This, again, is an initiating resolution, so if it were to pass this evening, it would be referring it to the Pl, the Planning Commission for further discussion and public hearings. It says Lisa, but is it not Lisa? Oh, okay.
I'm just getting this out of the way.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sometimes it changes up on me.
No, I don't have a telephone. Thank you, Mayor. The item you have before you this evening is an initiating resolution. It is an application. Often when you have initiating resolutions, they're brought to you by the staff, but in this case, we actually had a member of the public come in and request a change to the zoning ordinance. So, this is an application, and the applicant is interested in changing the rules that currently restrict food trucks, or as we technically refer to them, the Mobile Food Unit Preparer Full Service. Our current ordinance restricts it to food trucks to only so many hours a week, an individual food truck, and the concept behind that was to allow various businesses, in fact, the applicant's business originally, as well as some offices in town, to be able to have a variety of food trucks on-site, not all the time, but during key hours, for the benefit of the employees or the, in the case of retail, the customers. And there were limitations when that was approved. One was the hours. I think it's twenty-one hours. Any given food truck can be present on a site during a seven-day period, basically a week. And there's also some limitations placed on what constitutes a legal food truck in the town. Now, the applicant is not looking to change anything concerning what constitutes a legal food truck. The preparer part of that term that we use, the long-term, instead of food trucks, that relates to the type of food truck. This type of food truck and the type that the applicant is interested in having is a food truck where they actually prepare the majority of the food in the truck. It has the three sinks that the health department requires and all that. So, some people would say gourmet food truck or higher-class food truck, you know, different people refer to it in different ways. So, the applicant's not requesting a change to that, but they are requesting a change to allow a food truck that is owned and basically operated by the owner of the property to not have a time limitation on it. The staff has reservations, concerns about that, because through the years, we've had several property owners, particularly in other parts of Eldon Street, come to the town and ask us if they could move a food truck onto their site and basically use one of their parking spaces to become a restaurant. And we've always said, no, it's, it's not allowed. And although we do allow food trucks now, we still do not allow that, just moving it onto the site for a prolonged period of time, one particular one. And so, the staff does have concerns. We're, as I mentioned at the work session, we're happy to, to work with the applicant to find out if maybe there's some other type of business model that would work for them, and if that includes maybe a more minor change to the food truck ordinance, staff might be able to support that, and we would bring that back to you as initiating resolution. But right now, we think this is, is way too broad. We aren't recommending approval so that we can start discussions with the Planning Commission, because we really think that we're not at that point in the discussion. We definitely need to work more on what might be some appropriate solutions, and that's probably not best to do when we've got the deadlines of public hearings and advertisements falling upon us that we do if we go ahead and move this to the Planning Commission. So, the staff's asking to take a step back here, asking you to deny this particular request, and we will continue to work with the applicant and, and see if we can't figure out a way to help them try to achieve at least part of what they're trying to achieve. And that's the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? I have a couple of questions, but I was going to let my colleagues go first. So, my, my first question, I think you already answered this, but I just want to clarify, we do currently allow food trucks under some circumstances on private property, but only up to twenty-one hours per week.
Any, any given food truck.
Okay.
The, the concept was not to, part of the concept was not to have somebody come and park a food truck. It does allow, the current ordinance does allow, say, you have an office park, and we've had a few office parks take advantage of this already. Well, you could have, say, a variety of different food trucks, visit that site throughout the week, during the lunch hour, to afford your tenants, kind of almost a mini food truck rally, or at least a different food truck every few days on the site. So, it's, it's not just a matter of having one food truck sitting there. We believe that that can lead to some issues, not necessarily with this applicant, but with some of the other requests we've had in the past, I, I think we would have seen issues with having a vehicle parked there for a long, long time.
So, I just wanted to clarify that, because we, we had one speaker who was not in favor of allowing food trucks, but we already have an ordinance that allows them under these restrictions?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question was, if this were to be, you know, initiating resolution passed on to the Planning Commission, and if it were eventually passed, would this change be only for the property in question, or would it be a broader change in our zoning code?
This request, as it is written, would impact any of the zoning districts that are current, that currently allow the food trucks. So, we would be going...
So, it could potentially be widespread, not...
It would be.
Okay.
It, it could very well be. And one clarification, the person who spoke mentioned Washington, DC. Normally, in Washington, the food trucks park in the street. The zoning ordinance currently requires the food trucks to be parked on private property when they're serving, and this application does not change that request. So, we're not talking about food trucks in the street here.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm a big person in regards to precedent as well. Is there any place that you've seen in the Commonwealth where you've seen this happen? And the reason why I bring it up, for example, in Vienna, there's a restaurant called Maple Avenue. It's on one twenty-three. They have a, a food truck, but they're not allowed to have that food truck on the establishment because of the ordinance that's in place currently. I've done some homework. I'm just wondering if you had seen any precedent like that, because looking at this ordinance or the, the resolution in question, I didn't see anything in the state of Virginia, nor with the V M L, so I was just curious.
I mean, different jurisdictions have different ways of regulating food trucks. Some of them don't allow them on private property, some of them don't allow them in the street. When we did the original ordinance for food trucks, we surveyed several of the local jurisdictions, and we, as the town, came down to it as, looking at it as a temporary use. And that's one of the reasons why we have the limitation in the number of hours for any given food truck, is that we want it to definitely be temporary and accessory to the primary use of the property. And I can remember the discussions, and I'm sure some of the members of the council do as well, where we've had to fine-tune, you know, how do we describe that week period? How many hours should that be? Should it be twenty-one? Should it be less? Should it be more? So, we did, in the drafting of the original zoning ordinance text amendment, carefully vet those issues. As to exactly, you know, have I seen this in other places where they just come and, for the most part, sit? I, I can't say that. I can point to one.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
I hope I turned this on. So, I'm familiar with places outside of the Commonwealth that have this on a permanent basis, but they tend to be parks that are devoted to lots of food trucks. And I think the, the person who, the gentleman who was discussing the DC issue, the, the trucks that I'm familiar with in DC are not the nice, you know, trendy, fabulous ones. They're, they're kind of not very attractive. I, I'm sensitive to this applicant's desire to provide himself with a kitchen while he's working through the stages of the, of the building, but given that we can't restrict this to just him, and there's no end time, that I understand, I am concerned, and I know a lot of other restaurants in the area would take issue with it as well, and that is a concern, so. It's not really a question, it's more of a comment, I'm sorry.
It's all good. Other questions? Or I guess comments are appropriate, because there's not a public hearing here. Other questions? So, I, I just want to say that I know that the applicant that has brought this forward is an owner of a wildly popular business in Herndon that's moving to downtown, who has grand plans for expansion, and if this is denied, I do trust that the staff will work with them and try to find a solution that helps get them over the hump and get, help them meet their goals, but while also meeting the goals of the downtown, because I think this may just be one option that has some unintended consequences that I'm sure weren't realized when this question was asked, but I, I think that, I don't ever say I speak for the council, but I, I think I can safely say the council is excited about this particular, you know, new project in downtown, and we want to do what we can to help make a suitable solution so that they can meet their goals, and we can have an exciting brewery in downtown Herndon, so.
Well, the applicant and I have a meeting arranged for Monday to discuss their other zoning ordinance text amendment as well, which is on the consent agenda, but we will also be discussing possible resolutions.
Great.
To this as well.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so as long as we're making comments, I would just, so I would add, and I think we, I know we clarified this, but this is really to send this to the Planning Commission, and I think, given that we've certainly heard enough comments from the audience, both from businesses and residents, that maybe this isn't in the sort of fighting shape we want, and to have staff not recommend it, just so you know, that's really unusual. Usually, when staff brings it to this point, it is more likely that, that they would recommend it, so, given that, I, I do think, before we go through the steps of Planning Commission and then back to us, we really want to get it in that, kind of the right, a more refined place that we do feel more comfortable with than what I think it is today for the folks in the audience. And it sounds like you're already going to... And it sounds like you're already going to continue to work with the applicant, and that's great.
And without the constraints of advertisements and timelines and things like that, so I think it could be more efficient. So we look forward to seeing you guys back, hopefully in a few weeks or months, to see what might be able to be done, assuming that the council's will is to follow the staff's recommendation. Are there other questions before we entertain a motion? Nope. Okay, I will entertain a motion for item number ten. Ms. Mayor.
I move denial of resolution seventeen G dash seventy.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the initiating resolution made by Councilmember Olem, seconded by Mr. McKenna.
That's correct.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
I will now make my comments. I think we have worked so hard to really revamp the downtown and make it this wonderful place that people want to come, that I think this is going backwards. If someone wanted to put a trailer in my neighborhood, I would be having a heart attack. And to me, that's kind of what a food truck would do in our little downtown, this is our historic downtown. So I just, I've been to a brewery in Falkir County, and yes, they do have lots of food trucks there. I basically go because I know a band that plays there, and when they go play, I go. But it's just, to me, I would rather go be in a restaurant and have them serve me instead of having to go stand in line and shlep the stuff back in. But that's just me. And I just, I don't think that's what we want in our downtown, or at least, that's not what I visualize. And this individual that lives right across the street, I know, I've talked to some of the other folks down there, and they were sort of horrified about the thought.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I can empathize with the business. I mean, I've done a few podcasts from there. I definitely am pro-business and pro-growth, but there has to be some measure. And after the meeting last week, I looked through resolutions through Alexandria, Vienna, Clifton. I went through V M L. I asked for clarification. I even went to the town manager, or excuse me, town attorney, just based on the language. And I think, like I said, the intent is good, but unfortunately, the way the language is really does bother me, because it opens up Pandora's box. Because if you allow this to happen, it opens up the entire zoning area to, you know, what may come. You know, again, it's, the road paved with good intentions sometimes, you know, smacks you in the butt. That's an original one from me. But I think it's, you know, it's, I can appreciate what they're trying to do, but again, based on timelines, based on precedent, based on what the Commonwealth has, you know, I have to say no to this, but at the same time, I don't say no to what the idea is. I think we can work together to get something that makes sense, but I just don't think this makes sense on several fronts, and I'm going to be, that's why I second it. Going for the denial.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to make one other comment. I just want to clarify both for the residents and the business owners. As we've mentioned, there is a food truck ordinance already on the books, right? Because we do want to advocate for that, right? We do like the concept of that in small doses. So today, it's already available to this applicant and any other business owner to have on their own property, right? To have on their property a food truck up to twenty-one hours a week, right? So us, even if we do deny this tonight, I just want to make sure folks recognize, they still can, the applicant or any other business, be it a food-related business or not, can have a food truck on their private property for up to twenty-one hours a week. That's already on the books. So given that today, this applicant, if they want to do it every day of the week, that's potentially three hours, because I know the applicant mentioned they're going to do this, they will have a food truck there most days. I know today, the applicant's business is open, I think, four days a week, so maybe they're going to have it five hours a day for the four days a week they're open. I don't know exactly what their plan is as they develop the new property. But I just want to make sure that's clear to folks. Even if we deny this tonight, you will very likely still see a food truck at the applicant's business.
Not on a permanent basis.
Okay.
Right, so. Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, so I'm going to clarify, the motion on the floor is to deny resolution seventeen G seventy. So the motion is to deny, so those in favor that it not be forwarded to the planning commission will vote aye. It's confusing to vote yes when you are saying no to something, so I just want to clarify that, because I have messed that up myself. So all those in favor, I'll call the question, all those in favor of denying the resolution to the planning commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Okay, that motion does carry, and I look forward to hearing what happens between staff and the applicant. That leaves us with our consent agenda, which has several items, one of which is item number sixteen. We did receive some comments today, as well as some comments this evening that have been entered into the record. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that brings us, that concludes our agenda.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at eight thirty-five P M. Thank you, everyone.